...Board of County Commissioners, July 2017, the 17th, Registered Schedule Board Meeting. Tonight, I've asked Administrator Randy Harris to open us with invocation in place.
Lay your heads, please. Father, we praise you and thank you for your love and your mercy, your kindness. We thank you for watching over us, Father. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and take care of very important issues for our community. And in those things, we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance and counsel from above. Father, let your Spirit help us to glorify you in what we say and do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number one on the agenda is approval of minutes from the Registered Schedule Board Meeting, July 6, 2017. Any requests, changes, or comments?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right. Moving to consent agenda. Item 10 has been requested to be pulled by Commissioner Hill. I think he had something he wanted to work on with it. You said a later meeting, correct?
Yeah, I think I still want to do that.
Okay. That'll be heard at a different meeting. Item 8, not pulling it, just wanted to read a supplemental request that's going to go along with it. In addition to the request for authorization to submit the grant applications for the subject projects, we're asking to add these projects into the capital improvement plan and allow for the chairman's signature on documents associated with the grants. That's for item number eight. All right, any question? Yes, sir.
Since you did the addition to it, go ahead and pull it for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull item eight for discussion.
Off of consent.
So I need a motion to approve two through seven and nine.
I do approve. Second.
Was that, who was? An motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right.
Now, right back.
Go back to item eight, which was authorization to submit grant proposals to Enterprise Florida and the Florida Department of Transportation for Florida Job Growth Grant Funds. We have put together a list that you have of six requests. Basically, the requests are water and sewage treatment centers at our interstates and highway interchanges, I believe a railroad construction site or crossing being relocated, and reconstruction of a road, 175th. These are all projects that we've been working on and searching for funding for a while. But I thought it best that if we were going to submit them in for funding, that we add them to our capital improvement plan. Any questions? Just wishes of the board.
I make a motion we add them to the capital improvement plan.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The other part of that was a supplemental that we had offered, which was that you authorize the chairman's signature on the submission of those items to the state as grant application.
So we need a motion to approve the grant applications as well as the additional requests.
I change my motion to read, "In addition to the request for the authorization to submit grant applications for the subject projects." I'll continue. "And the staff's request of authorization to add the projects to the capital improvement plan and allow the chairman to sign all documents and associated with the grants."
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Hill. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
All right. Mr. Chairman, did you include number nine?
Yeah, we did.
Previously?
I did.
With the two through seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For sure I did.
I thought the motion was two through seven, but...
I said, I included nine.
Oh, nine. Okay.
All right, moving on to staff reports. Randy Harris, County Administrator, Public Works.
I'll be glad to entertain any questions, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I did prepare a brief update on some things, mostly roads. And this one's very important, kind of at the front burner project. 29th Road, the bids are going to be open and then presented to the board with a recommendation on August 1st. That project's been in the process for a long time and some eager people to see that one get started. County Road 49, underfunded, 60% engineering is complete, engineering and design. We're trying to stretch the dollars that we have, work with DOT, trying to obtain additional funding. There's a safety program that Representatives of the DOT told us about a couple of weeks ago, we're going to pursue that. We got obtained crash data that we think will help us obtain the rest of the funding that we need to take the reconstruction of county, reconstruction and widening of County Road 49, all the way up to US 90. The project begins at 27. 122nd Street, Padlock Road, that'll be under construction before long. We're at 60% engineering complete. County Road 136, which we discussed briefly in the last meeting, from High 10 to County Road 417, engineering design is 10% completed. That's another one that is underfunded and we're trying to come up with some solutions to that. And I want to comment on something for clarification. We talked about the importance of the City of Livo replacing their old worn-out lines, utility lines, and the other section, the western end of that project. And I want the board to understand that the western end of that project has not been approved by DOT in their transportation improvement plan, the five-year plan. We talked about it last year, I mean, last meeting. We have attempted to get that funding approved and we're going to continue. There is a possibility, even a remote possibility, but there is a possibility that we could get that funding sooner than five years. But right now, it is not in an approved TIP, okay? US 90 turn lanes, we're waiting on some utility certifications for Windstream, and then that one, we should get approval from DOT to go ahead and begin bidding. Your completed projects, the extension of 252, County Road 252, from 51 to 250, completed is 169th Road, Hogan Road, Central Road, Perimeter Road. We discussed the 164th Bridge in the last meeting briefly. That's why we went to DOT and had a conversation. Clearly, we cannot afford the improvements that we need on the bridges in Swanee County. We've relied for years on funding from DOT. But no one has the funding right now to replace that bridge. The federal government is requiring us to take some action. We had come up with some points that we made. One was to just leave it posted at three tons and do nothing because we don't have any funding. But they came back when we submitted that and said, at the very least, they want us to address the footing failure in one section. That's an old culvert bridge. So I discussed that with one of our engineers, and he's putting some information together regarding that methodology and going to send it back to them. We discussed a plan, which I think is probably the least expensive approach that we can consider, especially given that we don't have a lot of funding. So if they approve that, then I'll come back to the board and we'll discuss an estimated cost and figure out how we can go about performing that work. In fact, it may be work that our own staff can perform if they'll approve it. So I'll let you know as that, as we get closer. Do you have any questions otherwise?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I spoke to you brief last week about the project on 129, the lighting, I think, the mass lighting. I see they're putting a big base over there, a big...
Next to B&amp;B.
Next to B&amp;B.
Right.
You're getting ready to install those.
Yes. Correct.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
How, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harris, how far, I know how far the lighting's coming to Livo, coming to city limits, but how far on the other side, just to the B&amp;B, basically where it cuts back into Tulane?
I believe so. It was supposed to go to 10.
So it went to interstate.
Now, these, the initial lights are the tower lights above the interchange, and they'll be doing the other lighting as well.
I do have one question about 164th.
The bridge?
The bridge, yes. Is this a situation where we can close this bridge and without affecting a large number of residents with a detour?
Well, I discussed that with DOT when we were over there, and I told them that was the only alternative I had was to close the bridge. So, yes, if we could close it, it would not affect a large number of people. There is an alternative route that takes you north or comes in from 252, straight south, ties back into 164th, just east of that bridge. The only problem with that is that if we have heavy rains, that section floods very low. Now, if we can leave it posted at three tons and if people abide by that, then we'll probably be okay. But we've had difficulty with people abiding by anything that we post, to be quite honest with you. In fact, when we put barriers up and try to prevent them from going over bridges, they drag the barriers out of the way. But anyway, that was one option that we discussed with DOT, which is closing the bridge.
Any more questions? Any further questions? Here are none, we'll move on to item 12. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on in general business, possible board action, preliminary plat for the cottage at River Hammock, Unit 1 subdivision, Ronald Meeks, planning and zoning.
Mr. Chairman, board members, what you have before you, something we don't see too often these days, is a new subdivision plat. But the name of the subdivision is called the cottages at River Hammock, Unit 1. This is for a preliminary plat approval. Later, there will be a submittal of a final plat, which would be the final development of the subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located in Section 5, Township 3, South, Range 11, East. It's located within the boundaries of the Advent Christian Village in Dowling Park. The size of the subdivision is a total size of 1.59 acres, containing a total of nine lots. The lots will front an existing paved road, which is known as Riverwood Drive. It was constructed with the Riverwood subdivision. For you that are familiar with the Dowling Park area, when you go down Marvin Jones Boulevard, you have Riverwoods on your right-hand side. As you're going back towards where the Copeland Center is, towards the rear, there's a patch of woods on your right-hand side before you get to that, and that is the location of where the subdivision is. The lots will be serviced by a centralized water and sewer system that is owned by the Advent Christian Village. The zoning on the property is RMF 3 with a land use classification, residential 5. Current density there is 20 dwelling units per acre. However, this proposed development will be constructed a single-family with a total of nine homes. The zoning board of adjustment did approve a variance for the setbacks on the southern boundary property lines, where the homes could be constructed closer to the boundary than what the zoning regulations in that district would allow. This would allow for a better utilization of yard space for the overall lot and create a greater separation between the dwelling units. The zoning board of adjustment did approve that at their last month's zoning board meeting. During our review of the plat by myself, as well as the county attorney, there were a couple minor things that were left off of the preliminary plat that land use regulations require, a couple of those being just the soil types being mentioned on the plat. The elevations are shown, but there should be a directional flow error that is shown. We do know the flow is back towards the river there. So there are minor issues, don't affect the plat any, but what we would ask the board to do is do a, an approval of this preliminary plat contention upon that language being added to a corrected copy. Myself, as well as Mr. Pravat, will verify that the language has been added and it will just be made a part of the file at that time. That's all I have for my report on the subdivision. If board members have any questions of me, you can ask them. Mr. Jim Skank from the Advent Christian Village is also present. Do you have any questions regarding the construction of residential homes in that subdivision?
Any questions for Mr. Meeks from the board?
No.
Got a motion to approve a preliminary plat?
Moved it through.
Got a motion to approve?
I second it.
Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mine? I guess I moved it, we get it out, we run it up paper.
Coming in light.
All right, moving on to item 13, discuss with poss, or no, discuss estimated cost of chip seal, County Administrator Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I took the roads that we've either discussed here or Commissioners had given me for a list and ran estimates on those. I actually sent those to the company and asked them to provide their own. The only thing that you're looking at on this list is the cost of the surface treatment, the chip seal itself. This doesn't include the work that staff would take care of in preparing the roads themselves, the sub-bass and base, lime rock, everything that we would do on a road construction project. So that hasn't been included because that's something that we would do with our own equipment. But in any event, what you're looking at is the cost of the surface treatment itself, the actual chip seal, its maintenance of traffic, mobilization, the chip seal, that's a double course of granite, using granite in two sizes, and then what they call fog seal upon completion. And I wanted to present these numbers to you because you're going to be going into your budget workshops very soon, and at least you'll have some idea what type of cost you might anticipate if you want to try to budget anything for chip seal going forward. The, I just want to point out a couple of these in District 4, that multiple short roads in Welburn, that's essentially everything in the northeast section, north of the tracks and east of 137. I've met up there and talked to people for years, and to be honest with you, it's kind of a nightmare for a grader operator to try to do these little short roads, if we can knock out a lot of them at one time and then come back later and take care of some of the others. It'd be great to wrap up Welburn. There isn't a lot of length there. If you combine all those, they're very short. But it'd be nice to get those out of the way because it frees up your grader operators to do these longer roads that we've got all over the county. District 5 is one that you want to pay close attention to. I know we've had a lot of discussion about 176th Street. That number represents a triple chip seal. The board's just going to have to, at some point, make a determination on whether or not you want to continue to apply for funding from DOT, as we have been, or if you want to consider the chip seal. If you do the chip seal, DOT is not going to approve that as asphalt anytime near term. It just ain't going to happen. In my opinion, the asphalt is going to be a better product for the truck traffic that travels that. But if you want to do the triple chip seal, you can do that as well. The representative of the company indicated that the greatest challenge, in his opinion, to the chip seal with large trucks is when you don't have a wide enough ingress egress point and a long enough radius for trucks to get in and out. When they try to turn sharp under that heavy load, they will tear the surface or run a risk of tearing the surface of that chip seal. But otherwise, the board, that's something the board just has to wrestle with. These others are pretty straightforward projects. The ones that you see in District 1, that top one, 80th Terrace and 139th Drive to Mitchell is one that we've talked about for many years. If you drive past the public works facility and administration office and you're headed west on 80th, drive past our office where the pavement ends and the dirt road begins, those two roads that are identified would allow us to extend that straight on to the west to the stop sign, turn back to the north and connect to Mitchell. That's a very important route for our rescue units. They travel that all the time, and it's pretty brutal on our equipment, trying to respond to emergencies headed back in that direction. And then these others are just other unpaved roads that were submitted. But in any event, if you would just consider this information as you prepare for your budget workshops coming up pretty quick.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. I do. Through these, when we look at chip seal, we obviously are putting pavement, so to speak, covering a road that's going to require drainage, proper drainage. How are we, I know we have paved roads with a tree within two feet of the road and not a lot of drainage on the edge of the road. My concern is, is at what criteria are we going to use to qualify the appropriate right-of-way so that we would have effective drainage?
The criteria is simple. We work within the existing right-of-way because we can't do road projects if we went in and tried to purchase the right-of-way that you might find in more urbanized counties with higher, much larger populations and much greater tax base, where they can go in and purchase lots of right-of-way and build very large retention ponds. Almost invariably, we're working within the existing right-of-way. And in fact, you know, I worked on with Mr. Pravat, the eminent domain cases for perimeter roads. I don't know how many years it had been since any eminent domain had been considered in Swanee County. Now, there is a project that I'm aware of where some property owners may donate some right-of-way, some additional right-of-way, just to accommodate some stormwater ditches. But more often than not, we're trying to work within the right-of-way, and it makes it difficult, to be honest with you. I mean, they're very tight. It isn't just the tree issue, it's trying to create drainage ditches. Very often, we have to make them so steep in order to create the capacity that you try to create to hold some water that makes it terribly difficult to go back and maintain them with mowing and things of that nature. But we haven't historically purchased any right-of-way.
And the concern is, is vehicles running off the edge of the road, how much the chip seal is going to be able to handle that versus, I mean, we have enough problems on our pavement not handling vehicles running off the edge of the road.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you. If people would drive the speed limits that are posted, there'd be less of that. We'd have far fewer problems, but people don't drive the speed limit in Swanee County. They drive a whole lot faster, and unfortunately, when they're running off the asphalt, they're over-correcting, coming back on.
Major accidents.
Yeah, it isn't simply causing problems for the surface of the road, it's causing some major accidents. But all we can do is post them and encourage people to drive the speed limit.
It's 6:1, half dozen other on this, so I mean, you got, we're putting the asphalt, I mean lime rock down on these roads and packing it down tighter as we can get it. The water runoff ain't going to be much different from running off that packed asphalt as it is off this chip and seal. And them running off the road, I mean, it can handle, I mean, it can handle it for some, for most part, but these are roads that we're never going to have a chance to put asphalt on. So if we don't take into consideration an alternative source to do something of this nature, then we're just going to continue to do what we've been doing. And I know the two roads that were submitted out of District 3, I worked with our two road supervisors and asked them for the two highest maintenance cost roads that we had in District 3 because I wanted to see if the chip and seal would reduce some of the costs because we're constantly going out there with stormwater issues where it's cutting across the road, washing the road out, and this would be one of the ways to remedy that problem, save on maintenance and not have to go in there and do it with asphalt.
Any further questions or concerns on it?
This is not for approval, this unless you have a question about, I guess, your, the district that you represent and the road. We just wanted this on here so get everybody can kind of agree for a list to look at in budget time so we had numbers to present when we start looking for funds. If there's no further questions, we'll go on to the next one.
Item 14 was pulled to be heard at a later date. No additional general items, public concerns and comments. Anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Catherine Allen, County Extension Director for UFIFIS, Swanee County Extension. I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow department heads, as well as the community and other extension offices. As you know, one of our colleagues in our office was killed in a tragic car accident on Monday. So just wanted to say thank you because without them coming and helping and pitching in, things wouldn't have gone as smoothly as they did under the circumstances. And please, just a reminder to everyone, for everyone to wear their seatbelt. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, you had a comment card, you wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Administrator comments and information, did you cover everything at your staff report, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment that two of those projects that we listed on Agenda Item Number Eight are projects that we've talked about for a long time associated with the catalyst site. That's the construction of 175th Road and relocating that railroad crossing that needs to be relocated because the railroad spur. My hope in submitting this is that the state will go ahead and approve funding for it. Otherwise, we don't have a source of funding. We have some money that we've set aside, we've been sitting on for a while, in case we have to make up a difference in the railroad, which we won't know about until the bids come in. But that's the only source of funding otherwise that I have to move the spur, I mean, to move the crossing, construct that road. We have a customer, Matco, that's prepared to start constructing their business up there once that railroad is, actually, they'll probably start before the railroad's complete, but they're looking forward to the completion of that spur because they plan to use it. We need a road coming in to that business as well. So my hope is that with this source, with this newfound funding from the state, that they'll approve this, and we won't have to deal with that ourselves later. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to board members' requests, inquiries and comments, starting District 5. Ms. Richardson, you have anything? Ms. Richard, you have anything?
Have nothing, sir.
Have nothing? Michelle?
Have nothing.
Mr. Sessions?
I'm good tonight.
All right, me, huh? Thank y'all for coming out. This was an awesome meeting and we didn't really have to.
Thank you. I don't have anything. Anything, I'll just need one other thing, fellas.
Motion adjourned. Got a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.